Call the order of a special meeting in Goodyear City Council, eighteen June two thousand and seven. Would you please join Councilmember Lord in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
No, I don't think so. So. Suza.
Make that Suza. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide this council in its deliberations this evening for the betterment of all who live in this city. We ask that you protect the men and women employees of our city in the function they perform for this community on a daily basis. We ask that you take into your arms those of our military who have given their lives to bring democracy to countries of Iraq and Afghanistan. For those that remain, bring them home safely as soon as possible. We ask all this in your name. Amen. Thank you. We have one council member who will not be with us this evening. I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Holland.
So.
Second. Motion, Councilmember Suza, second from Vice Mayor Antoniak. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Holland, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The ayes have a six-zero. Expenditures, we have accounts payable for May two thousand and seven. Any questions on expenditures? If not, please may I have a motion?
Mayor, I didn't hear anything.
I think that should be on.
They are not helping you this evening, are they?
I don't think he has the right.
No, he's. Does he have tonight to do? Last month.
No, this is very close time. I will update council. This is tonight.
Yeah, I think his part was. That should have been cut off.
Okay. All right. No, okay, we have no bills to ratify for this evening. Communications, I believe we have two items under communications. I'd ask the inner-city manager if he would lead us in those, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to call upon Stephanie Stett, that's up to introduce Diana Kreip, who's our public art specialist.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest employee in community services. Her name is Diane Kreip. She is our new public art specialist. I'd like to give her the floor for just a moment so she can address you.
It's good to meet you, and I'm excited to be here in Goodyear as a public art specialist. I've been at ASU for twenty years, working as both a director of public art for six years and before that as a public information officer for the College of Fine Arts, graduate of Valley Leadership, class number twenty-six. And I'm just thrilled to be here, and I'm looking forward to starting a new public art program and creating memorable places for the city of Goodyear.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very happy to have you with us.
Mr. Mayor, the second item is we'll have Jerry Poston from Water Resources address council as it relates to some of the Lipsco events the past week.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I would like to start by introducing some guests we have from Lipsco. Greg Sorensen, Bob Dads, and Matthew Garlick. They'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm here, as Brian said, to give you an update on what happened with Lipsco this past week. We had three separate events. One was on Thursday, one was on Saturday, and the final one was on Sunday. Thursday, June twenty-one, staff responded to a call at ten a.m. for sewer overflow. This was on Litchfield Road, north of I-ten, in the Lipsco service area. Staff notified Lipsco, and they responded, and they were aware of the problem and were mobilizing. Staff investigated the problem further and discovered flow coming from manholes in the northbound and southbound lanes of Litchfield Road. Also, there was sewage flowing from behind Cracker Barrel to the east, Wendy's, Denny's, and the mobile gas station to the west. Staff was dispatched to the area and assisted Lipsco in containing the flow. Public Works was notified and responded with traffic control, barricading in the area. We then contacted tanker trucks, and we did a pump and haul from the Lipsco sewer system to the city of Goodyear sewer system. This was then treated at the city of Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. The situation was contained shortly after two p.m., and Lipsco crews remained on-site throughout the evening. Staff completed work around eleven p.m., and hauling ended at midnight. On Saturday, June twenty-third, at one p.m., staff responded to another Lipsco sewer overflow in the same location. The manholes behind Cracker Barrel to the east, Wendy's, Denny's, and the mobile gas station had surcharged again and were discharging raw sewage. Staff worked until ten p.m. that night with the haulers ending at ten p.m. On Sunday, June twenty-fourth, there was a fire just prior to noon, and the Goodyear Fire Department responded. There was a fire on a blower in the blower building, and this disabled one of the motors on their blowers. They couldn't get by on three blowers and still keep the operation going. Plant was down for forty-five to sixty minutes while the fire was contained. We again called in staff, assisted Lipsco, and being proactive to make sure there were no overflows. In this case, we didn't have to haul or deliver any sewage to the Goodyear system. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do you want to make a comment? I wasn't sure if Mr. We see Mr. Dodd's jumping up back there, so I wasn't sure if there's more to come.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Bob Dodds. I'm the president of Litchfield Park Services Company, and as Mr. Postema reported to you, there were two spills. We've determined that those spills were a result of failure of the alarm systems and failure of human beings. We've determined our control systems were working as they should, but the response, either the alarms failed, as I said earlier, and the humans failed. These events are very regrettable. They do happen, and they can be controlled. We are right now in a process of upgrading our control systems, but we're still at the mercy of human beings. We're examining our staff. We are interviewing our staff. We are carrying out investigations. We already have taken measures that are that will be retraining, discipline, and dismissal. We're going to ensure this does not happen again. That's a relatively new plant, and there's no reasons for these things to happen, or at least with human error. And I'd like to thank the city of Goodyear Public Works for their real quick response to the situation and helping us. It was invaluable assistance. It controlled the flows. There was no damages to the businesses. There was no disruption to service, and I have not received any complaints from the four commercial establishments where the overflows took place. The other incident on Sunday, things seem to come in threes, is something that I don't suspect human intervention. I don't expect anything other than this just that happened. A motor caught fire. One of our blower motors caught fire. At eleven fifteen, the sprinkler system activated as it should, and because it's a commercial establishment, it's a three-alarm fire. So three of the fire departments came out very, very quickly. The fire suppression system, the sprinkler system worked as it should. The room was full of smoke. It was quickly cleared, but in order because of the water on the floor, in order to let the firemen into the facility, we had to shut off the power to our plant. The plant was offline for about forty-five to sixty minutes, which caused no problems. We got back online. What we are doing, we are bringing new blowers. We should have them within seven days to replace the burnt-out one. We are going to have a specialist look at further redundancy systems in our alarm control systems, and we are looking at better ways to absolutely be sure humans can't intervene with our systems.
Questions? No, thank you.
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, what's the guarantee on a blower? I mean, how long is it supposed to be? I mean, was this a short circuit, or was the blower just old?
We don't know. The blower's not old. Nothing is old on that plant. And we have the supplier is taking it out. They're going to take it to their plant. I'm not sure what state it's in. They're going to take it apart and find out why it caught fire, because we want to make sure that we can't don't have similar weaknesses in the remaining blowers. I looked at it. I opened it in the cabinet. You could see it was a contained fire around the motor. Whether it was from a bearing or windings, we just don't know.
Vice Mayor? Do you want to?
Well, I just, we've got a couple of letters from commissioners, and not necessarily a question that you're going to answer tonight, but I would, I actually have a lot of concern. We've had capacity issues at the plant over the last year. We've been addressing with the odor issues and that sort of thing, but more importantly, we have a significant area of economic development north of I-ten that's going to occur, and we were just discussing this. Couple of us were just discussing this. I'd like to see us discuss a bit more in depth. You're not going to answer this question tonight or satisfy me tonight. One, what's the future capacity of your current plant? Two, what are your future expansion plans? Three, do we agree with those future expansion plans and where that expansion is to occur? And four, the impacts of that on our economic development capabilities and future permitting issues? I mean, we're adding homes. I gotta imagine you got a home coming online every single day.
Actually, no. It's slowed down quite a bit.
Slowed down a little bit.
No, actually quite dramatically, Vice Mayor. The growth has been about four percent versus about fourteen percent in the previous three years. There are very few connections. There's lots of inventory out there, but it's not hooking up.
Okay. Well, we still have, we've got.
Commercial coming.
Yes, yes, there's commercial coming through.
We've got malls coming online, all of that stuff. And I'd just like to see us have a further understanding, a more in-depth understanding of what's going on, because, you know, I read Commissioner May's letter to Mr. Johnson, Utilities Director, and she's very concerned. Mr. Mundell expressed the same concerns. So you've got two of your five commissioners that are expressing serious concerns. I would imagine there are going to be three, four, and maybe five commissioners expressing concerns to you down there, and I'd like to have a thorough understanding of this.
I would like to do that, and I'd like to do that. I'd like you to set up the forum. We'll come and make presentations of what we're doing, what we're at, and what's planning. And we do have two masters. We have the Arizona Corporate Commission, who rightfully so want to make sure we don't overbill capacity, because capacity is very, very expensive, and it's rate shock to the ratepayers. On the other hand, we have to be prudent. We have to be good engineers. We have to make sure we have the capacity needed. So we have two things at conflict here, but we are proceeding on a prudent basis, and we'd be pleased to give you a presentation. I'd also like to throw out an invitation that this incident, these incidents show the vulnerability of all our infrastructure. And I'd like to work on that, maybe have some formal arrangement or some discussions with the city of Goodyear on how we can help one another in situations like this, with respect to supply of water and supply of wastewater treatment. I don't think we should, can, and should operate as islands. We have not been. I have been very good cooperation with the city of Goodyear, but I do think we need some more emergency planning. I'd like to throw that out to you as an invitation.
Mayor? Yes? Could I add something to that? This fall, could we have a work session? Could we have a session where we have? Let's attach these to the city management, I think. That's where we want to go with this. And you'll coordinate with? Sure. Set up something that we can do this fall, because I think we need to hear more on this.
Yes, we can, we can do that. Taking notes, we can look at their capacity issues, what their growth, projected growth is. We'll bring it back in a work session in this council.
Thank you.
I mean, it has not been a good year for you.
It has not been a good couple of weeks.
I mean, we have citizens all over that are angry. You know that.
I, we do know that, Commissioner.
And so it's just really a concern that it's not something we can just let, let go. We have to be diligent in working with you and figuring out how are we going to straighten all this up.
But I assure you, things are being done. We have no hesitation spending the capital, but we are being careful and prudent. We inherited these plants, and we inherited the problems with the plants. And we are, we have other plants around the state and various other states. And the reason we have problems is because they were not well thought out and well engineered in the first place. So we have been prudent to make sure what we are doing is the right thing and the most cost-effective thing, you know, to, to address the problems.
Okay. I think, I think we need to move on, but Brian, you've got our thoughts on this, I think. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we'll now move to citizen comments. Opportunity for any citizen to comment on any non-agenda item, a non-agenda item in front of the council this evening. I understand there's several. Much to do that. Would you please, each of you, limit your comments to three minutes if possible, and start by giving your name and address. Okay?
The first speaker is Alan Conlin.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to read this, because that way I won't stammer too much. As you know, Estella Mountain Ranch had a power outage that lasted around nineteen hours due to vandals. We also had the copper stolen from our pump station that supplies our water to our lakes, our landscaping, and our tennis courts and bathrooms at South Park were vandalized. Numerous homes and garages had had items stolen, and cars had been broken into. A neighbor, just down the street from me, was carjacked from his driveway. More, more, excuse me, more mailboxes and not have been broken into, and one was blown up recently. I spoke with a mail carrier, and he said that the homes north of Elliot are not leaving their house lights on at night and have to pick their mail up from the post office. We have a police station here at EMR sitting empty. It's used for wrecks and cruiser parking. We would like this station manned sooner than later. With the new monument and wetlands at the bottom of Estrella and the new park going next to the high school, it's going to make more people aware of what a prime target EMR residents are for crime, especially knowing our police station sits empty. Unlike Pebble Creek, we are not gated. As a voting community, we need and deserve your consideration in this matter. I thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker is David O'Brien.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Dave O'Brien. I live at one zero two zero three, South one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue in Estrella Mountain. We bought our home a couple of years ago, moved from Simi Valley, California, which is considered to be a safe community, but I know back when my daughter was a teenager, several times she had to drive to our police station because she was being followed by someone at night. And so one of the reasons we picked our home in the Beezer area there is because that police station is right around the corner. And just today, I found out that it's unmanned. I would believe that most people would think that a police station has policemen in it or is at least open for business. So I just wanted to express my concern tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joyce Barrens.
My address is one one two five one South Oakwood Drive. I also live in Estrella Mountain Ranch, and I'm just here to reinforce Alan's comments that I am concerned about our crime in Estrella Mountain Ranch and would like more of a police presence in the area. Thank you.
Last speaker is David Jernis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Jernis. I live at one seven five nine one West Eastwood Avenue in Goodyear, which is also in Estrella Mountain Ranch. I'm not here tonight to talk about the police station. I'm here to talk about something that I discovered was on the agenda later in the evening. I'm hoping you will forgive me for bringing it up now. I believe it's a really important thing that we get the city center built and that we get it built soon. I think, sitting out here waiting for this to happen, we've seen how interested this community is in working with the city council, how interested the citizens of Goodyear are in making things happen here, and you can't even find enough place for them to get in the door. The city center, there are people out there in the community, in the public sector, who are already interested in moving into this thing. We've been planning it for years. I hope we can get it done soon. I think it's vital that we move on it. I see that the agenda costs are five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for planning on it, and I don't understand why, why it's going to take that to draw plans for a thing that we've been doing for a long time. If that's what it takes, let's do it. But, you know, if we have to sit around here and pick up the color of the drapes before we let people move in and make it happen, it's not going to happen. So I'd appreciate it if you put your major concerns in getting the city center done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to those, lady and two gentlemen that spoke about the police, we are limited in how we can respond to those by law in this particular forum. However, we, we certainly are taking action to beef up patrols. We need to apprise these individuals of what we're doing in a report, and we would like you to respond to us whether or not you think that's satisfactory. And if you don't, you tell us you don't. Okay? Is that fair? Okay. We'll move now to the consent agenda, and I believe to tell you that one of the items has been removed. Is that correct? Consent seven H.
Removed from the agenda or just removed?
Removed from consent agenda. Seven H, Final Plateau Fadera, at the request of the applicant, has been removed from the agenda. Okay?
Removed from the agenda. We will not be taking action on it tonight, but removed from consent.
It's only on the consent agenda, and it is removed.
Removed completely.
Yes. Wait. Which one is?
Seven H. Okay, ask the clerk if she'd read the items by title only, please.
Item A, approve the updated nonutility and utility capital improvement program, five-year plan for FYO seven to twelve as modified during the preceding work session. Item B, authorize the city manager to enter into a mutual aid agreement with Option Indian Community for fire protection in response to other emergencies in Goodyear. Also, to authorize the city manager to enter into a mutual aid agreement with Maricopa Fire District for fire protection in response to other emergencies in Goodyear. Item C, approve a professional services contract in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars to Stanley Consultants, Inc. for planning and preliminary design services for roadway improvements to Yuma Road between Litchfield Road and Estrella Parkway and Western Avenue between Litchfield Road and La Crescenta Avenue. Item D, award a construction contract in the amount of three million, nine hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents to Northway Construction, Inc. for the construction of the community park adjacent to Estrella Foothills High School in Estrella Mountain Ranch located at one two seven nine five South Estrella Parkway, just to the north of Foothills High School, including bid alternative number one, soccer field and pass. Item E, award a contract in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars to C. Williams Construction Engineering, Inc. to provide construction management services for phase one of the community park adjacent to Estrella Foothills High School in Estrella Mountain Ranch. Item F, ratify the police department to seek grant funds from the governor's Office of Highway Safety in the amount of forty thousand for aggressive driver, traffic enforcement, vehicle-related equipment such as radar, emergency lights, and vehicle partition. Item G, adopt resolution zero seven dash eleven sixty, authorizing the city manager and the chief of police to apply for a grant from the Gaylor River Indian Community to fund a crime scene technician. Also, to authorize the city manager and the chief of police to sign all documents associated with the grant. And also to authorize a crime scene technician position for the FYO seven oh eight budget subject to award of grant funds. Item H has been removed. Item I, approve the map of dedication for Goodyear Center Point at the southeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road. Item J, appoint councilmember Frank Cavalier as the city's representative and councilmember Joanne Osborne as the city's alternate representative to the Maricopa County Community Development Advisory Committee for FY two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Item K, adopt ordinance zero seven dash ten seventy-five, amending policy number two hundred, employee compensation, policy number seven hundred, professional and personal conduct, and policy number eight hundred, mediation, discipline, and appeal process policies as an amendment to the city of Goodyear Policy and Administrative Guidelines Manual of February first, two thousand and four. Also, to adopt resolution zero seven dash eleven sixty-one, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled policy number two hundred, employee compensation, policy number seven hundred, professional and personal conduct, and policy number eight hundred, mediation, discipline, and appeal processes. Item L, approve the map of dedication for West Los Brises Drive and South one hundred and eighty-third Avenue in the Los Brises planned area development generally located between Citrus Road and Perryville Road north of Broadway Road. Item M, ratify the police department application for grant funds in the amount of three thousand nine hundred dollars for the purchase of pleboponomy supplies and AlcoSense or FST portable breath test instruments, and also to authorize the city manager and chief of police to sign all documents concerning the grant. Item N, adopt resolution zero seven dash eleven sixty-two, authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Goodyear to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Chandler, Glendale, Mesa, and Scottsdale relating to joint representation in settlement efforts relating to Central Arizona Water Conservation District versus the United States of America at all. Also, to approve contract for legal services by, between, and among the cities of Chandler, Glendale, Goodyear, Mesa, and Scottsdale, and Engelman Burger PC relating to the joint representation in settlement efforts relating to the cap litigation, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Item O, adopt resolution zero seven dash eleven sixty-three of the mayor and the council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving first amendment to the pre-annexation development agreement with Standard Pacific of Arizona, Inc. to return well site previously conveyed by Standard Pacific to the city in exchange for extinguishment of Water Resource Fee credit certificate in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Gelsner?
I'd like item G removed.
Okay, that's the construction contract for Foothills Community Park Phase One. Hold on that one. Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through O, excepting D and H, which has been removed?
No move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Susan, second from Vice Mayor Antoniak. All those in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have a six-zero. Mr. Gelsner, he.
My name's Gary Gelsner, one four nine seven one West Pinchot Avenue in Goodyear. Mayor, when this park came up for review at Planning and Zoning Commission, I opposed the park because it did not have any provision for a dog park in the, in the system, and I have not had a chance to look at the actual site plan, but if I remember correctly, nothing has changed. However, in our north community park on Litchfield Road, Parks and Recreation found some extra fencing and was able to build a very nice grass-lined dog park that backs onto one of the softball fields. And so with this construction, I don't want to ask you to disapprove this, but what I want to ask you to do is ask staff if they can find some additional money for the contract so that a similar type of grass-lined dog park can be built behind one of the softball fields or Little League field that is being built in this park. And I think it will serve both the community and serve the dog lovers of this city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a response, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brian Barnes, Public Works Deputy Director. The plans that we are awarding with this contract do not have provisions for a dog park. We can address that need in phases two or three. Phase three is where we really have the money to be able to address more of the amenities that would be found in the park, and we'd be happy to address it at that time.
Okay, thank you. Some comments from council? Could I have a motion to approve D, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we counsel awarded a construction contract in the amount of $3.954, $329.51 to Norquay Construction, Inc., for the construction of Phase One in the community park adjacent to Estraya Foothills High School in Estraya.
Second. Okay, and I assume we are incorporating Brian's comments that can change the phase that will be considered?
Yeah, it'd be open to hearing.
Okay, I don't need a roll call on that. It's not a resolution.
Well, we should have roll called the very first part of the consent, so.
She didn't?
No. It's supposed to be a roll call.
You didn't roll call.
So, should I just do it now?
Sure.
Okay. Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Six-zero, and that includes item D.
Item D?
The one who just, that Gary just spoke of.
Clear this up here. Did we just, we just voted on item D?
The consent agenda, with the exception of item H. All the consent agenda items.
Is that motion still on the table? We took a voice vote on the consent.
Yes, apparently we took a voice vote on consent, so technically we should probably make a motion for reconsideration of the consent agenda and re-vote with a roll call. Because resolutions and ordinances have to have a roll call vote, so. I would probably clear it up technically that way.
Second, with a motion to reconsider. This evening's consent vote?
Yes, we should make a motion for reconsideration.
Yeah, you have a bunch of resolutions on consent, sorry. The motion on the table was strictly for D, and it was strictly for the construction of the Estraya Park. And that's the motion I have. How about then, do we, could I have a motion for reconsideration of consent agenda items, Alpha, A through O, excepting H?
Sylvia.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Lord, and a second from Vice Mayor Antoniak. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Six-zero.
Okay, and we'll move now to business. Special use permit for a large retail user. Steve Brettje?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, the next two items do concern this large retail user special use permit site plan. If it needs your approval, I can do a one presentation.
Absolutely.
Your honor. Having said that, we have two applications here tonight. The first application is a special use permit for a large retail user with the limited outdoor display of merchandise. And the zoning ordinance defines a large retail user as a single user with 100,000 square feet or more of floor area. The second application we have tonight is a site plan for that large retail user, and since it is a large retail user, our ordinance requires that it receive Planning and Zoning Commission approval and city, or review and city council approval. The post-home improvement store is the subject of tonight's special use permit. The applicant has let us know that it would likely be a Home Depot, though that specific user has not been finalized at this point. The large retail user is proposed on 13 acres located within the larger 91-acre Canyon Trails Town Center. And this is the outline of the 91 acres there at the northeast corner of Yuma and Cotton Lane. The anchor C, the Home Depot, is proposed in the northern portion of the center. Surrounding the Home Depot is predominantly Canyon Trails Planned Area Development to the east, north, and west. To the east here, we have existing single-family development, proposed school site. To the north is proposed courthouse parcel. Across Cotton Lane is single-family and commercial parcels. And then to the south will be a proposed commercial development within the town center. The large retail user is proposed to contain about a little over 141,000 square feet. And with this diagram, we have to the south of the anchor C here, we have the parking field. To the north will be loading bays here and here. This will be the garden center. And this here is for reference Cotton Lane, and to the north is Canyon Trails Boulevard. These are the building elevations proposed for the large retail user. They do incorporate elements approved for the rest of the center, the building materials and colors. For example, the use of both tile and metal roof accents. We had a neighborhood meeting held on March 1st. Several people from the surrounding area did attend the meeting. No opposition to this large retail user was voiced at the meeting. On May 16th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item. At that meeting, the applicant requested that the stipulation regarding restriction on deliveries be removed based on operational needs and the location of this large retail user from the residential to the north, given that they have a buffer of approximately 120 to 150 feet from that proposed residential parcel. The commission agreed with that, with the reasons put forward by the applicant, and did remove that stipulation from the special use permit and site plan applications. With that, staff does find that the special use permit will be compatible with the surrounding area. We do find that the site plan does comply with the city's development and design standards. As such, staff and the commission are recommending approval of the special use permit subject to twelve stipulations in the staff report, and we are recommending approval of the site plan subject to the thirteen stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staffs available for questions, as is the applicant, Mr. Ralph Pugh.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the applicant?
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be with you again. My name is Ralph Pugh, and my office address is at 1930 East Brown Road in Mesa. We've been here quite a bit, talking quite a lot about this project. I'm pleased to tell you that we're approximately 30 days away from commencing construction on the first initial portion of the entire Canyon Trails Town Center project. We're a couple weeks away from finalizing permits and an August 1 start date with a July or next summer opening date is what we're looking for, so we're excited to finally be moving forward on it. With respect to the two items on your agenda tonight, the special use permit for the large retail user, we concur with the analysis and recommendation by your staff. We've read the stipulations, we agree with those. We also agree with respect to the next item on your agenda, which is the site plan. There's been significant work on that, and we agree with the recommendations and stipulations there. So, without taking more of your time, mayor and councilmembers, thank you for your attention, and we urge your support of this case. Be happy to answer questions if you have to.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for anyone from the public to comment, either on the special use permit or on the site plan application. Comments from the public? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please, for the special use permit?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a request for a special use permit for a large retail user, anchor C. No moves? Do you have to go first?
No, that's okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Again, it's only special use permit.
Just a special use permit.
Yes. Yes.
Steve? If memory serves me, a couple years back on planning zoning, when this first came to us, we had discussed anchor A having those delivery stipulations on time, correct? Did that stick with then the special use permit? Did those delivery restrictions stick with it?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, anchor A does have a delivery curfew for non-perishable goods. Those deliveries are restricted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So, anchor A, the super target, does have a curfew.
But only on perishable goods, not on anything else? Is that what you stated?
For non-perishable goods.
Non-perishable goods. From 10 to 6. Okay, so why didn't that same restriction go with anchor C at that time?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff had originally proposed a similar stipulation for anchor C. Similar situation in sense that staff was looking at a residential parcel to the north. Given that each special use permit is different, the applicant did make a case for removing that stipulation. The commission agreed, and the stipulation was removed for anchor C.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, I need to hear the case. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, is your question relating to what happened on the original zoning case? Because that's where the stipulation arose.
Correct, that's why I was on that.
Absolutely. How clearly, how clearly I remember. And what happened was, and when the zoning case occurred for the Canyon Trails commercial project here, the Town Center project, there was a stipulation placed on those delivery hours on the east end of the project because it was anticipated that a particular use would be there. We didn't know at the time, and the LRU ordinance frankly was just being finalized in Goodyear. So, that was put on basically the east end of the project. It was not put on the original zoning case on what we're going to call for the moment kind of the northwest end of the project because there was enough buffer there with Canyon Trails Boulevard and perhaps expecting that in the future the land to the north would be a non-residential type use. And the significant buffer. So, it wasn't put on there, and then when the staff raised the issue on this case, the commission agreed. Now, we do have representatives here, Mr. Scott McCoy from Home Depot, who can explain operational reasons why it's necessary to have deliveries, but I think with respect to how we got to where we are, that's how it happened, and that's why there wasn't a stipulation on that end. Okay?
There's two different types of delivery trucks.
Two different types of.
One makes noise, one does not make noise.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Right, and two different locations, two different LRUs, as the staff has indicated, and they're looked at individually and separately. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Again, this is on the special use permit. All those in favor of the special use permit signify by stating aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have a six-zero. Now, I ask for a motion for the site plan for the LRU.
I move we approve a site plan for the large retail user to be developed on 13 acres within the 91-acre Canyon Trails Town Center.
A moment. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Susan. It's open for discussion on the site plan.
I just have one comment. I really thought the variety of hardscape was great.
Pardon me?
The variety of hardscape they're using in this development is something we ought to be looking at for some other developments. It's very good.
All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have a six-zero. We'll now move to a resolution approving a minor amendment to the Goodyear General Plan. David Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for a minor amendment to the Goodyear General Plan to amend the land use definition for the loop compatible land use area. The loop compatible land use area, which is located in the far northwestern area of the city, currently allows industrial and commercial uses but prohibits office uses. Staff has discussed this issue with members of the General Plan Advisory Committee and has concluded that the exclusion of commercial office developments was an error in the drafting of the general plan. This general plan amendments will amend the definition of loop compatible land use area so that commercial office developments are no longer prohibited. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request at their meeting on May 16, 2007. Staff has also recommended approval. And is here along with the applicant for any questions they may have. This concludes my presentation.
May I ask who you spoke to from the general, the general plan advisory committee?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I spoke with the applicant Jay Ellingson, and Mr. Ellingson also, from what I understand, spoke with you.
I don't think we ever, no, this is an error, is my point, I guess. It's, we certainly can do it two ways.
Mayor, members of the council, Jay Ellingson, Suncoast Development, 14130, West McDowell Road. I think it was an oversight would be a better word than error. As we go back and we looked at those of us that served on the general plan committee, there was never any reason to exclude office and office complex from these areas that are outside of the accident potential zones. And so, if you look at it from that aspect, even in our conversation, Mayor, that would go back probably last summer, when we first looked, realized that there was an oversight in terms of the language that excluded these, nobody could come up with a reason as to why. The state statute relative to military bases does not exclude them. The base in our conversations with them doesn't have reason to exclude them. We think it's a great use in terms of the long-term mission of loop to have uses that are compatible, and so, error may be the wrong word, but oversight would certainly encompass something that shouldn't have been there in terms of the language.
Okay, thank you. Further comments from the public? Okay, could I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 07-1164, resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving a minor amendment to the Goodyear General Plan to amend the land use definitions in the general plan for the loop compatible land use area to permit commercial office developments and/or complexes and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion on the resolution? No move?
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Cavalier, and a second from Vice Mayor Antoniak. It's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Because I understand that loop has no objection to this at all.
Mayor, councilmember Susan, no, they do not.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
No, I found the answer to my question. There's no change to the APC. I just wanted to make 100% sure. I would agree, it does seem like maybe it was an oversight at our time. I would just caution you on how you represent, how you've talked to the general plan committee members. There's two of them sitting up here, and I don't think I got a phone call, so, just caution.
Okay, Maricopa, vote please.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Cast as six-zero.
Okay, well, I'll consider adoption of an ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, amending the zoning ordinance. David, you're up again.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment that would allow the consideration of public parochial and charter schools in any zoning district as a special use. As indicated in your staff report, the city's zoning ordinance currently provides that schools may only be considered in agricultural and residential zoning districts subject to the approval of a use permit. Compared to other valley cities, staff found the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance to be quite restrictive in limiting schools to the residential and agricultural districts and a barrier to schools that wish to locate in Goodyear. As such, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this request that public parochial and charter schools be regulated as a special use so that they can be considered in any zoning district, subject to the special use permit criteria contained within Article Four of the city zoning ordinance. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public? Anyone from the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Adopt Ordinance 07-1076, amending Article Four, Section Four, Dash One, Dash Two, Dash A of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance dated May 24, 1999, as amended, to allow for the consideration of public, parochial, and charter schools in any zoning district as a special use, providing separability and establishing an effective date.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt ordinance 07-1076 as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Osborne. It's open for discussion. This doesn't in any way affect distances between schools. This doesn't in any way affect distances between schools and liquor establishments or that sort of thing, does it? That's just-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this does not affect any existing regulations pertaining to distance separation requirements.
Okay. Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six-zero.
Okay, well, now, Mr. Mayor?
I'll go. Point of order, I've got to declare a conflict on the next one. So I'm going to step away.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now consider approving the Contractor Services for the City Center, Brett Burningham. Or, no, Jim Nichols.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want to start off by saying that Brett and I will be giving this presentation together. Brett will start off by discussing the master plan elements, and then I'll chime in with some comments on the public-private partnership portions of the contract. So first, Brett will start off, though.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, we have a few slides to show you this evening. The first slide, wanted to provide some background to talk briefly about how, where we've been to this point. First, in February of 2006, the city released RFI for universities, and the city has since had, come to agreements with Franklin Pierce College and also the University of Incarnate Word. Also, September 2006, the specific plan was adopted, and that adopted specific land use and development regulations for the city center site. Next, February 2007, we received council direction for Performing Arts Center and for a component with the city center, for that to be associated with the city center. Also, February 2007, the city published an SOQ to provide planning and architectural services to create a master plan for the 140 acres of city property. And we received 11 applications for that. There were three applications that were definitely ahead of the rest. We conducted interviews, and two of our council members were included as observers in those interviews. And HGR Architecture was selected. Council may recall, we used HGR Engineering with the city center specific area plan. HGR Architecture is a different division of that company, and would like to introduce, we have Joe Spada, who is the project manager for HGR Architecture, who's with us this evening. And finally, the scope and fee were finalized, and we are in front of you this evening. This exhibit shows the city center area and the 100-acre park area, the northwest corner of Yuma and Estrella, adjacent to the Desert Edge High School. And now, what I'd like to do is quickly provide a, just a brief overview of the major components of the scope of work. And then, as Jim mentioned, he can get into greater detail about the public-private partnerships in the Performing Arts Center and the city center. First of all, the conceptual master plan for the city center, the first major task is to develop a conceptual plan to include all of the uses that we need in the city center. The city administration, the city hall, the library, park areas, parking, the universities. We will utilize the consultant to show us exactly how these uses should be configured, where they should be located on the property in the most efficient way possible. Second, as you know, the city is fast-tracking to identify a private partner to construct a performing arts center. The consultant will aid in the assistance of an RFQ for private development partners and assistance with the evaluation of those responses for that RF, RFQ. The third, is space programming. We need the, an analysis of the facilities that will be needed for the selected departments that will be in the city center area. We also need to make sure that the city facilities are sufficient for a city of our size. Fourth, it will include an analysis and identification of opportunities for public-private partnerships that can be pursued to construct civic uses on the site, and would also include developing an RFP for a design competition for the development of new city center and city administration buildings. And it would include assistance with the selection of a potential developer. It would include branding, and Jim will get into this in greater detail, to help provide a greater sense of place for the area, and also be used to guide development of designs that will be requested in the RFP. And finally, the consultant will prepare a final master site plan, and this will be very similar to a final PAD zoning application. So we'll see conceptual building elevations, we'll see architectural themes, and you'll see two- and three-dimensional site plans. So these are the major tasks that are included in the scope, and now I will turn it back over to Jim.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, Brett's kind of covered the master planning portion. This flow chart shows you the general approach that we will be taking, or the consultant will be taking, in addressing all the projects at one time, because really, we're looking at this as a three-pronged project. Certainly, the master plan is the central element, but also the public-private partnership recruitment for both a performing arts center and the city center as a whole are also key separate yet related elements. They all weave together at some point, and the consultants will be, we will be using their expertise in recruiting for developers and negotiating with developers to help us achieve the city center that we're looking for in exchange for the development rights and whatever other opportunities are, there is interest in. In addition, several months ago, when we first presented the hub-and-spoke concept, there was discussion at the council level regarding renaming or branding the city center because it's just a title that we've used for a long time, but does it need its own identity now as it's finally coming to fruition? And so we thought that since we've got these consultants on board, and they're working on the master plan, and they'll have all that information at their disposal, this would be an opportune time and a great use of those resources to help us brand our city center, what it'll be called, what theme. This goes beyond the area plan where there are certain design themes in each of the four quarters of the city center. This is more of a brand identification type of process that they would be going through on our behalf. And so, in the end, the final product that we hope to have before you is a final master plan, and hopefully, if all goes well, two development opportunities, one for a performing arts center that will include not just construction but also operation, and then the construction of the remainder of the city center on our 40-acre quadrant in exchange for, again, whatever things we negotiate, as well as having a well-planned-out 100-acre parcel that will include university locations and the other amenities that we're looking to complement that. So that concludes our presentation on the contract. We're available to answer any questions, and again, representative from HGR can answer any specifics as well.
Thank you, Jim. Would anyone from HGR like to speak? Okay. All right. Comments from the public? Seeing none, could I have a motion for the Contractor Services? So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, you're not inferring that the Performing Arts Center is going to be the leader in this, are you?
No, sir, I'm not. And thank you for clarifying. It is a separate component but not a leader. It will follow a parallel process. It can start more, the recruitment process can start more quickly because since it is one single entity, it doesn't necessarily need to wait for the conceptual master plan to be complete before it is initiated. So it may, the recruitment may start sooner, but that is by no means intended to make it a lead on this project in any way. One thing I did forget to mention, I'd like to use this opening just to remind you that it's our intention to have a work session with the council next Monday evening, July 2nd. The purpose of that meeting will be to discuss the Performing Arts Center, city center, all, everything that's intended there to help provide the consultants with a lot of the information that they'll need to begin moving forward. What elements do we want in a performing arts center? What issues do we want to make sure they're aware of? What adjacencies are important to you that they should factor into their master planning process? So next Monday evening, it'll be dedicated exclusively to that discussion, and the consultant team will be here to take your input, to facilitate some of that discussion, and hear directly from you what some of the important elements are that they should be paying attention to.
I say that because I think it's very imperative that we keep in mind what the gentleman brought before this council this evening. The need for a city hall where we can accommodate the citizens of this community the way they should be accommodated, not to be herded into a small room like this, like a group of cattle, frankly. And that is my intent here, I believe, holding in the performing arts concept, but certainly it doesn't come before the needs of this community, and the needs of this community, I feel, is a city hall where we, this council can function on a, on a professional basis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just mentioned, this is for public consumption only, because I know I'm going to get calls tomorrow. We are considering also library within this.
Oh, yes.
And we know that, but the people don't know that. So when we talk about this, they think-
Maybe to be more clear for anyone who's not extremely familiar with this, the city center project will include all potential facilities, including a library and any other amenities that come up in the master planning process with and through the consultants. So definitely a library will be part of that, as well as whatever else is addressed in their, in their master plan.
And my sentiments are the same. We have staff all over the city, people having to drive to have meetings. It isn't cost-effective. So I'm looking forward to a city hall, too, but also with considerations of doing performing arts and to see what else we can blend with it and make this a very nice. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but say all this is approved and the master plan is, do you really think we'll be vertical by 2010?
I am very confident we will be vertical by 2010. This, in fact, the, to give a little history, city, the city hall, Phase 1 of city halls included in the CIP, that I believe scheduled us to be moving into a city hall by the end of 2010. The plan, the contract we have before you actually speeds that up by three months, where it should be done by September 2010, if I'm not mistaken. And if we are unable to find a development team to work with, we still have it in the CIP, so one way or another, we will work to attain that schedule.
And just one addition to the gentleman that spoke tonight, we are all as anxious as he is to get this started and to get it completed. It may not look like it, and they don't understand the process and which one has to go, but I think we're better prepared now that we have the universities, we have all the entities all together to really build the type of center we really want to have.
Just want to add one, a couple things. One, that on the performing arts, since I've been involved in that, it's not just build, to build it and operate it, build it, maintain it and operate it. The other thing I'd like to add to-
You need to get a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. To build and maintain and manage it.
Yes.
The other thing is the universities would like to be here, or at least both of the universities would like to be here next Monday night and join us in this.
That's good.
Does the, well, the contract, or are your actions in HGR, are you going to talk to interconnectivity among the four quadrants and traffic or transportation connections? Is that a part of, maybe Jim, you can answer it, I don't know.
Well, the specific area plan started to talk about those types of issues, so as we move forward and get into the greater detail for the civic center quadrant, city center quadrant, that will sort of evolve into the more specific discussions of maintaining circulation, and actually hopefully set the precedent for how pedestrian circulation and other non-vehicular movements are handled as you begin to continue the development around the other three quarters.
So you'll be giving us recommendations on this?
Yes.
Great.
And those will, and, you know, part of this is that when the original specific area plan was done, the ballpark deal hadn't been finalized, and neither had the universities. So now we have to actually look at that in terms of how we connect not only around that circle, but also now to the north and to the, to the east.
And that's to include underpasses or overpasses or-
Certainly.
Pedestrian overpass or underpass?
Yeah, well, we'll be looking at all those different types of options. Certainly, as that whole area grows, the amount of traffic on Yuma and Estrella is going to grow with it. So we have to be really careful to plan that, not only in the parts that we build, but the parts that the developers will build later on in terms of providing the total connectivity across all the streets.
Great. Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to hire HGR and Contractor Services for the city center at a price, I believe, six, if you remember the number, six?
Excuse me?
How much is it?
Uh, I'm sorry, six-
Sixty-nine.
$694,000.
Four-hundred and twenty.
Ninety-four, four-twenty. Four-twenty, thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Lord. All those in favor of the motion, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now, hold a five-zero. Robles, who my agent is-
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Pardon. He only had an M doc on you, didn't he?
It's like you don't notice him there, huh?
We'll now hold a public hearing to consider truth and taxation and adoption of the final budget. I'll open the public hearing, and Larry Lang.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am pleased to inform you tonight that we are closing in on the end of the budget process. This is a process, as you well know, started in September with some dialogue and some presentations on our long-term financial stability, and has encompassed a number of meetings ever since then, as outlined up on this chart, followed tonight by the final budget adoption, and then in two weeks by the adoption of the property tax levy. Tonight, the objectives that we'd like to accomplish, I will provide a brief overview of the proposed final budget, primarily for the benefit of the public, as there have been no significant changes in this budget from the tentative budget that you adopted approximately one month ago. And I'll keep my comments brief. We also will review the property tax impact reflected in the budget tonight, receive public comments as required by law, and those public comments, there are actually two public hearings that can be held within one. One is on the truth in taxation statement, and one is on the adoption of the budget. Both of those are, can be held as one public hearing this evening. After receiving those comments, closing the public hearing, we'll ask the city council to adopt the truth in taxation increase, and then we'll ask the city council to enter into a special meeting to adopt the final budget to comply with state law. into a special meeting to adopt the final budget to comply with state law. Very briefly, where the total funds come from in the budget as presented, the total revenues anticipated in this upcoming year are $515 million. Just a couple of key elements in that, $68.5 million of that is carryover of projects from the 2006, 2007 budget year that have not been completed and that money has not been spent yet. $92 million represents operating revenues, your city sales tax, your user fees, property taxes, and those types of revenues. Bond proceeds represent $74.5 million. And the large item, $190 million, is for special projects. Of that, $75 million is for the proceeds of the special assessment bonds surrounding the proposed mall between Pebble Creek Parkway and Bullard, north of, and McDowell, as well as the commercial corridor around it. An additional $75 million is proposed financing for the stadium, with $40 million as proposed possible future improvement districts. As you have heard me discuss in the various budget presentations, I like to discuss the budget in the context of new money as opposed to existing resources, where new money is money that is being introduced into this budget through additional revenues, or in this case also, that includes bond proceeds. So, where are we spending the approximate $500 million? $205 million of that we're spending towards what I call new money, which does include our operating expenditures and several other categories. I'll go into that in just a minute on the next slide. $30 million represents the fund balance that we expect at June 30th of 2008. $190 million represents the same special projects that I discussed just a minute ago, and the $68.5 million represents the expenditures of the project carryover funds that I discussed just a minute ago. So, more specifically, where the new money is going, because this is the heart of the budget that you're being asked to adopt, $79.4 million of that is going towards operating expenditures. $100.6 million is going towards capital projects, with $20 million going towards the, what we call the contingency, but truly for the fund balance at the end of the year and the set aside that we have for stability in our fund balances. $16 million for equipment and one-time expenditures, debt service of $10.4 million, and other expenditures of approximately $12.5 million. Drilling down one more level, the expenditures, the operating expenditures, we've broken into six different major categories, police, fire, public works, water, wastewater, development services, and then the other categories, and those combined to make approximately $80 As we've discussed in previous meetings, the authorized positions represented in this budget, the adopted budget for 2006, 2007 reflected 471 authorized positions. We had 11 positions mid-year, and this budget adds an additional 78 positions. Nine and a half of those positions represent positions that may be needed as a result of the annexation of the Sonoran Valley area and would be fully funded by the developer in that area. I thought I would also mention, in light of the comments you received earlier this evening, that a total of, I believe it's 13 new positions for police officers were funded in this budget for this upcoming year.
As opposed to your original proposal of...
The original proposal was eight new police positions, and five additional positions were added at the city council request. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about the property tax because part of the hearing tonight is on what is called truth in taxation, and I want to, as part of this dialogue, attempt to explain state law in English as best as I can. The city property tax rate will remain at $1.60, as it has for, I believe this is the third year in a row. Many of you will recall, the city council reduced the rate from $2.10 at that time down to the $1.60. Primary property tax, which represents the property tax available for operations, is limited by state law regardless of what the growth in assessed valuation is on existing property. And the purpose of that is so that your property tax values, as the assessed valuation increases, are limited in what can be applied to the primary property tax or, which is used for operations by state law. And that's basically limited to a total increase of 2% citywide. On the other hand, the secondary property tax moves parallel to the assessed valuation on the property. So, as that increases, the secondary property tax would increase pretty much at a proportionate level. The breakdown in Goodyear between our primary property tax and our secondary property tax for 2006, 2007 were just about 80 cents for each of them. Because of the limitations, the primary property tax rate has actually decreased to approximately 73 cents, and the secondary property tax increases to approximately 87 cents. With that, I'll take any questions you may have before the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing opportunity now for the public, comments from the public. Gee, saying that, I'll...
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I state my name?
Tom Scudlow.
Yes. 13621 West Edgemont Avenue. I was watching the display there showing the 2% regarding the primary tax rate. It seems to me that the taxes on our homes are going up regardless of whether that 2% is there or not because of the valuation, and I believe that you're getting a windfall from that to run the city. Now, every time, if you get a raise, you don't go out and just spend it. You should be looking at savings and looking in other departments and ways to cut in other departments if you need to spend money on something else. I believe the city should be doing the same, not just going to the well every time they want to buy some new city hall or whatever it may be. And basically, that's what I feel. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Very well said. Further comments from the public? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll call for a motion to adopt the truth in taxation increase of $81,989. Have a motion.
Go move.
Okay. A motion, Councilmember Lord, the second by, Councilmember Antoniak, to adopt the truth of taxation increase of $81,989.
Yes. I don't think I was the second. I'm doing, Councilmember Souza was the second.
Did I say Antoniak?
Yes, you did. I'd have to do more than color my hair, though.
No, you can do it. The second was Councilmember Souza.
I thought you didn't do it.
Okay. Okay. Open for discussion? Okay. I don't need a roll call vote here, do I?
Yeah, you do.
I'm going to say it, okay. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six-zero.
Okay, thank you. I'm now going to recess this meeting per state statute to determine and adopt estimates of proposed expenditures for the purposes stated in the published proposal. Called the order of a special meeting. We have six of our members of council in attendance. One is, won't be with us, Councilmember Holland. Do I need a, a vote to excuse her? Yeah, just in case. Okay, could I have a motion?
Who will be excused?
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Holland, signify by stating an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a six-zero. We'll now go to the business part of our agenda. We have one item, and that's a resolution approving the final budget, and Larry Lang.
I have no additional comments unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Adopt Resolution 07-1165 Determining and Adopting Final Estimates of Proposed Expenditures by the City of Goodyear for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2007, and ending June 30th, 2008.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Go move.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember, nope, motion from Councilmember Souza and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Open for discussion? Okay, approving the final budget. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes six-zero.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting, and we're on paragraph 10 of our agenda, and that is information. Would anyone on council wish to address the public on their current activities?
I guess that, question?
Yes, we'll get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Opportunity now for city manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I? We have a couple of items. First one is, is I did want to recognize Deputy City Clerk Lynn Mulhall. She was installed as president of the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association at the annual meeting just this past June 21st. I'd ask her for a speech, but there's a little bit more, and that is, is Lynn's been serving on the executive board of the directors for the past three years, and actually is the first deputy city clerk in the history of the organization as a deputy city clerk to be brought in as the president, so we're very proud of you. Second item, and it was announcement that went out late today, and that is, is Chief Mark Brown has been appointed as the interim deputy city manager, really filling in for me while I serve in this capacity. And as we know, Chief Brown's been with us for over 20 years. He's risen through the ranks of the police department, been the chief since 2003, and he's been very involved with the management of this city for many years, so we're fortunate to have him step up and do that for us. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Do we have any follow-up action? I don't...
Yes. We did have a couple of follow-up items, and those were, we will be putting together a work session as it relates to Lipscope, really finding out what their capacity issues are, making sure that economic development, certainly along the Galroad Corridor, aren't impacted and also impact on the public. So, we'll be scheduling a work session in the next few months after council comes back. The other is, is police department will be following up. We had three citizens tonight that expressed concerns about crime and vandalism in a stray mountain ranch, so we'll be bringing that back in the form of a report, and we can contact those individuals. So, those were the only two follow-up items.
Okay, thank you very much. I failed to note, Vice Mayor, you wish to comment?
Just a real brief report. We had a MAG Human Services Coordinating Committee meeting on June 20th last week, and Councilmember Lord brought up the point of shut-ins last week after following the APS power outage down south, and we had a lengthy discussion about that on the regional level, brought that up. Thank you for bringing it up at Monday night's meeting. It came up at the MAG meeting, and very healthy discussion. I think you'll find some information coming from Shelley and some good information coming back from regional folks on that. As well as, there was also a discussion on water stations and places for folks to go for respite or water, to escape from the heat. And I did note that we were kind of missing from the map, so if we have any of those or if any of our fire departments participate in that in any way, shape, or form, I'd encourage us to, I think we're, I think we may have announced it citywide where there are some places for folks to go, but make sure we're communicating that back with MAG.
Yes, I...
I think, yeah, I think that's it.
We met today at a meeting, and those things were discussed and noted, so we are looking into those.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity now for council to ask inquiries of staff. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. Public Works Director, how are we doing on the waiting pool? How are we doing on the waiting pool?
The splash pad? I know you said yes, you were looking at your parts.
Yeah, Mayor and council, the splash pad is up and running since last Friday.
I have a question. Is the dock part covered on, the shade?
It's in the process of being constructed and installed.
Oh, is it? Actually, is there someone out there with a hammer that are doing it, or is it just nothing out there yet?
No, I think they're setting up the forums for the pole bases and walkway.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is there a question now? Thank you. I have another question for the interim city manager. From a standpoint of economic development, have we heard anything from cancer treatment centers? Any comment on that?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Souza, we'll be coming back to council July 9th with a memo of understanding that we're working on right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or staff? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.